Next.
Item 6B, Adopt Resolution. Adopting the San Mateo Avenue Conceptual Streetscape Plan.
Through the chair.
Irene, no, please.
I just, I need to recuse myself since I own property in the area.
I believe I am also within that thousand foot, so...
So both Irene and Marty have recused themselves for living within the radius of thousand feet or less, and so they'll depart and then return after we've concluded this.
Sure. Javon Grogan, City Manager, good afternoon, council, members of the public. We're here tonight for adoption of the San Mateo Ave Conceptual Streetscape Plan. As the city council and the community will remember, the draft plan was completed in September of this year, and on September 24th, the city council held a study session to receive public testimony, accept the report, and provide staff with feedback. Staff has taken that feedback and are here tonight for council, hopefully, acceptance of the plan. And I will now turn it over to Darcy Smith, the city's Community and Economic Development Director, that will give tonight's presentation.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. My name is Darcy Smith, and I'm the city's Community and Economic Development Director, and I'll be making a brief presentation on the report for the adoption of the San Mateo Avenue Conceptual Streetscape Plan. The agenda for the presentation tonight will quickly summarize the objective of tonight's meeting. I'll give you a brief background for the plan preparation, summarize the community and city engagement sessions, recap the city council September study session, and summarize by closing with the action for you tonight. The consultant, Jacob Tobias of WRT, is in the audience tonight, and he will not be making a presentation, as he made a long presentation in September that was very thorough. But he is available tonight to answer any questions if you have at the end of my presentation. And while I'm making the presentation, this was very much a multi-departmental effort with team members from the city's Public Works Department and Community Services Department very engaged, as this involved the city's streets and the city's parks and public art, as you heard earlier tonight. And the project planner, Ruchidande, is also here tonight, and the city's planning and housing manager, Pamela Wu, who were very extensive in leading the efforts for our department. The objective for tonight's meeting is to end with, hopefully, adopting the resolution to adopt this conceptual plan. And I'll just start with a one-slide recap of the city council's study session on September 24th, where you reviewed this plan. We spent about an hour reviewing it, accepting public comments, and answering extensive questions. And at that meeting, you were in support of the plan, which, again, was a conceptual design, and you commented that you were very much in support of the simple and elegant design theme. There were two revisions made to the plan as a result of your comments. One was to add text studying a future potential vehicle drop-off and loading zone near Posey Park, which would also serve the Caltrain Station on the western side, access primarily from the eastern side, and I think you were interested in having that loading zone added. Also, text was added to ensure that any future lighting elements, such as the hanging elements that are over the paseos in the conceptual design are studied to ensure they will withstand the heavy wind loads that can occur in downtown San Bruno. And I want to just close by saying that meeting was overall, there was a lot of support voice by both from the community and the council, and I think that's a real testament to the extensiveness of the community and the city engagement, and the consultant really deeply kind of understanding the setting in the downtown and what its strengths were, where the areas for improvement were. And ultimately, this is the community's design vision for the downtown, and I think what we heard throughout the whole process was sort of a consistent vision, which is great. There is that unity around what the downtown should be, what our assets are, and again, where the areas for improvement are. So that's a testament to the success, I think, of the process. So I'll cover the plan background. We probably have some new audience members tonight and aren't familiar with that, but much of this is repetitive. As you may know, the city adopted the general plan back in 2009, and that general plan focused a lot on rebuilding the downtown. The city had a redevelopment agency, it invested in the downtown, had the vision to move the Caltrain Station to the downtown, which was a significant public works project. It is the heart of our downtown, heart of our city, and I think we've, we've invested in other areas of the city, but the downtown is in need of significant investment. The Transit Quarters Plan, which covered the city's downtown and the redevelopment area before it was eliminated, identified this streetscape plan as a short-term implementation item, so here we are, six years later, getting started on it. But I think the vision of that Transit Quarter Plan was to stimulate economic investment in the city, so this is very much an economic revitalization plan in line with the goals of the general plan and the Transit Quarters Plan. As a matter of background, the general plan lays out that vision, and this, this action tonight, 10 years later, really solidifies that vision. You have the symbolic heart of the city, the downtown, you have the main street, and the goal with this plan is to improve the aesthetics, also expand the streetscape amenities, which are things like benches and lighting, things that make the downtown sidewalks a really nice place to walk, improving crosswalks, so it's safer to cross the street, and just overall upgrade the appearance. And I want to emphasize, this is a combined effort. This isn't just the city, this involves merchants and property owners, and I'll give you some examples of how we engage them in the community engagement efforts. But it really did bring out a wide audience in the downtown, some business owners who hadn't really involved with the city up until this point. And really, the goal is to make a destination downtown where people like to go to dine, or they shop, they go to the park, park areas, and they have a place to meet. So the streetscape plan essentially lays out that vision, as I mentioned, to create a place, a sense of identity. It's basically what you want the street to be. And all of the major downtowns around us have had streetscape plans. This community has had streetscape plans too in the past, it just weren't, the funding wasn't necessarily there to implement that, them at that time. You can see downtowns here, like Laurel Street in San Carlos, and other communities that have done some great things around their downtowns, like the lighting you see here. And I want to emphasize, a lot of these communities started with the plan, and then over many times were able to secure the funding. There's a lot of grant funding. Once you have this planned in place, there's lots of other ways to make an investment over time. And why is the plan needed? It really does spur economic revitalization, but it also helps the city when we work with private property owners to tell them, these are our expectations for the street design. Instead of trying to guess at what kind of sidewalk width we should have, or what benches we should have on a new project, we have the vision laid out in this plan, and we will require all private property owners to make investments consistent with this plan on private property, and in the cities right away when they build in front of their properties. I want to emphasize, we will really strive through the budget process to initiate some maybe lower-budget quick wins, such as new trashcans, some signage. There's a lot of things in this plan that can be added over time, and if we do go in and put in new sidewalks, we can, you know, store the trashcans, we can hold on to the signage. There are some expensive items, I'd generally say the paving and the park improvements. There are other sources for park improvements, such as the development impact fee, which you initiated, and people are paying into that. So I want to emphasize that the funding, this really lays the foundation for future funding, and some of that funding may be incremental, some of it may be through grants, but we're really committed to implement this plan. So the key characteristics of the plan are, again, define the streetscape, have that cohesive identity, focus on things that are really important to the community, lighting, benches, signage, safer sidewalks, having sidewalks that are functional for people of all ages and pleasant. The project workflows, this has been about a year ago, when the city first released the request for proposals. You authorized funding for this plan in January, and the plan process took about eight months. And see the process here, we start with feasibility analysis, the community engagement, which I'll talk about, and span several months of intensive engagement, and finally, the plan preparation. So quickly, I'll go over the community engagement, which was kind of, this plan, unlike maybe the general plan, or the Transit Quarter Plans, or the Downtown Parking Management Plan, gave us a real opportunity to do something neat, which was have a walking workshop. We held that on a weekday with the business community, got really great turnout, and it was sort of a conversation about what are some of the great things about the downtown, but what are some challenges? Of course, we stood in front of a trashcan, thought, aha, yeah, that's a challenge, but we looked at the trees, we looked at the crossings, we looked at all the things that we thought just needed some, some attention. We held a drop-in workshop, which was on a Saturday afternoon in front of Citibank Plaza. That allowed us to really get a great audience of children. You'll see them here, drawing on the sidewalk, that little heart says the avenue. And we did sort of rank choicing with the dots, which is always fun. I think what you'll see in this photo is just the wide variety of people who engaged in this effort, and that's partially because we went to them. We went out and had the walking workshop. We had this workshop that was just drop-in, very casual, with some fun balloons. And I just want to commend the consultant and the city staff, kind of went above and beyond the norm to host these fun workshops. I think we just got a different audience. When we actually had the nighttime workshop, which was in this room on a weekday at 7:00, we, we only got about a dozen people. And I think it's a testament to the evolution of community engagement. We also had an online survey with about 100 respondents, that was very great. And we also had stakeholder meetings. So again, we went out to the community, we met with very engaged community members like Dennis Sammett, but we also got less engaged people, who said, this is sort of our first experience with the city asking us, like, how can we make the downtown better? And I will tell you that the chamber has been very involved with more of a presence in the downtown, hosted in the entrepreneurial center, so, again, we're kind of coming to their, their main street and engaging with them, and I will say, that's been very positive. We also engaged city staff, we engaged the police department, I mentioned Public Works, Community Services, but we also had meetings with a wide variety of city committees and commissions, in addition to the Planning Commission, who reviewed it twice. We went to Culture and Arts Committee, had a great, you know, conversation with them. It wasn't a lecture session, it was very much a conversation about what are the opportunities for art. We met with Parks and Rec Commission, because again, the streetscaping plan includes two parks. They may seem like forgotten plazas, but they are identified as city's parks, and that also gives us a funding source. And the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, the Pedestrian Advisory Committee is very engaged around these issues, such as pedestrian design, pedestrian safety, and they were offered great feedback. So in closing, I'll just summarize, we, we had the September study session, and you had some great suggestions. One, you can see here with Posey Park to look at a drop-off zone. It is a little tight, but that said, I think when we look at the design for this plaza and reinvigorating it, looking at drop-off could, could be really important here. And you see this great example of the art, and someone said, well, that looks, I mean, the hanging lights, that looks great, but gosh, don't want it to fall on anyone, so if, and if we do proceed with this great light, which I thought was kind of an interesting way to light the paseo, you can see really kind of draws people in, then we'd study the wind load feasibility. But it, it has been done, the picture on the right is a real picture, so I think it is feasible, so we didn't want to eliminate these completely. So last, I'll close, which is, what's the outcome of this plan? It is really, again, it was set by the community and the council and the commissions that we visited. It's to design the downtown, to have a simple and elegant design with activated paseos, better public spaces, unified street features, and again, that unique identity. And what's identity? It's the city's heart, it's the city's main street, the downtown. In closing, I just wanted to thank the consultant team too. We had a great consultant, Jacob Tobias from WRT was the lead. We also had CSW help with engineering and Parisi Transportation Consultants, who also did, I think, the Transit Quarters Plan and has worked with us in the past. So in closing, tonight's action is a request to adopt a resolution adopting this conceptual streetscape plan, and that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, or direct them to the consultant, Jacob Tobias.
Through the chair. Darcy, I just want to say, thank you so much, because I think you've just been a tremendous asset to the staff at the city. It's so, just so exciting to see where we've come and to feel like we know that this can happen. You've put together a great team, the work that you've done this past year is just exceptional, so, thank you, I just want to make sure I say that. The other comment I want to make is that I, I was one of the ones that made the comment last time about Posey Park and maybe doing a drop-off. There really is a drop-off, it's just further down, and I think maybe it's just not, maybe needs some striping or some better signage, and so there is, there is really a drop-off, I just think it's not clear. So when you walk, you see things differently than when you actually drive. So when I walked, I saw what I needed to see. I love the street sign that goes up and over the San Mateo Avenue, I think that's just beautiful, and I'd love to, I'd love to see that one versus the half-quarter. So just overall, the vision that you've created for the streetscape plan is exactly, I think, what the residents want. You know, we, it's something that's pleasant, it's safety, there's, there's red zones, there's lighting, big trees, the design, the, I mean, everything, I think, that everybody's been talking about, and so I, I believe in the vision, and I know that, that this, this San Mateo Avenue will just be a very beautiful place. I think, I think one of the comments is a resident, and maybe we can stop at this question, is, we've done this before with no results, how can we assure residents that once a plan is, is approved and adopted by the city council, that we will actually move forward? And so, maybe tell me a little bit about, and there's, there's some big numbers, and there's Phase 1, Phase 2, but what does it take for, and maybe in your experience, what does it take for a plan like this to come to fruition, where residents can really feel excited about it and know something like this can happen?
City manager.
Yeah, let me take the first part of that, and then Darcy can chime in. You're right, at, at $19 million, do we have $19 million to execute this plan right now? No, we do not. All the downtowns that we all love and enjoy, that we see are revitalized, really started with a plan, and that's what this is. This is taking the first step and creating that palette and saying, here's what we envision. The other thing that we should remember is that we do not have to do it all with the city's dollars. Part of creating the palette is when there is private market investment along the downtown, we are saying to the developer how they should improve the, the front of their property in the pedestrian realm, and so not all of it is funded with city dollars. The other point, and Darcy hit on this a little bit, is that we do have two parks there, Posey Park and Centennial Park, and we do have parking lieu funds and development impact fee funds that will pay for some of those park improvements that can be dedicated towards downtown. The other sort of overarching, on-the-balcony statement that I, I think is important to make is, as we have development proposals and as we negotiate for community benefits, I think this needs to be high on the list, because we know it's high on the list of what the community has articulated for what they want in their downtown. And so as we have development projects that are coming into the city, and if there's a community benefit proposal, I think this is high on the list of what staff is negotiating for. Outside of that, it's looking for every piece of revenue we have to dedicate to it. You know, we have a half-cent sales tax measure that could be general purpose. You know, a large portion of the community has identified roads, roads, roads as the number-one thing. That's not to say that there might be some small project that needs a little quick win or seed funding to make an immediate improvement. And so we will continue to sort of strive for every avenue, but it all starts with the plan, and we don't have the money to fund the plan now, but that doesn't mean that we shouldn't articulate the vision.
Well said. Thank you so much for that. So I want to focus on the two parks. So we'll start with Posey Park. I agree, I mean, we need to move benching toward the street and keep it away from the back. If you talk to anybody who works for Caltrains, it's a constant problem with homelessness, and they're, they're down there fixing the elevators. You wouldn't believe, people are getting locked in elevators because of the vandalism that's happening. So I want to make sure that whatever we come up with and put money towards, that it's sort of vandal-proof, I don't know if that's even possible, but yeah, anything, it needs to be some sort of space that's permeable, number one, right? Get rid of a lot of cement and add more greenery and bigger trees, and so I think staff's kind of hit it, I think it's, I think they know what the problems are. The fountain, and I hate to hear the word defunct, but, you know, 10 years ago, we thought about development, we thought about fountains, fountains were a great idea, well, guess what? We hit a drought, and fountains aren't a great idea. So I understand where we're coming and that there's a need to do something different than that, than having a fountain that's going to waste water, that's a precious resource that we don't need to have, and that comes with problems and issues too. So let's make something that's beautiful, and there's so much great things you could do with greenery and whatnot, so I think that's a great idea. The other park that's across from Bank of America, I guess, I don't know what the long-term vision is, because I know we need parking, so I just am afraid or fearful of, you know, could that be the entrance to a downtown parking thing? It's a lot we own, we don't have to go buy the lot, so I want to see something happen, but I don't want to put a ton of money into something that I know, you know, 10 years down the road, five years down the road, we've got a plan to do something that we're going to tear it up. So I think we need to be careful in what we decide to do there. That would be another question. Parking, so as a parent, as a former owner of a business on San Mateo Avenue, parking is your number one. To lose two spots in front of my business is kind of devastating, right? It's two less spots that I have. I know on the 400 block, it's pretty limited on parking. We've added a new aperture that doesn't have as much parking, the commercial space isn't even open yet, and parking's a constant struggle. So my question is, is there anywhere to squeeze more parking anywhere in the downtown area? From a red, red curb that's not needed, we can gain a spot here, is there anything on the El Camino that we can gain? Is there anything? Because we're going to lose, what is it, 11 spots on San Mateo Avenue? So it's something like that. So I just, I know we need the spots, because I think the safety's a big piece, we should be able to drop off somebody on San Mateo Avenue that's a handicap spot. So I just, I don't know what can be done, I don't know, you know, even if it's, if it's even possible, but I don't know if anything's been looked at, but I hate to lose parking, and I know we need to, but I hate to lose parking, so I'm always afraid of that. I think that those are all my comments, let me just see. I can't wait to see larger trees. I mean, when you look down San Mateo Avenue, I want to see the greenery, not a lot of old storefronts, although storefronts are pretty unique and different, and I love that, that look too, so we're not going to take away from that. One of the big problems that happened on the last streetscape remodel was those, and I think you, I saw it in one of your pictures in the present, in your packet, was the big planter boxes. Big planter boxes and overgrown shrubbery that now you can't see beyond, beyond those. They took up a lot of parking, and then you took up a lot of visibility, so I don't want to see something that's at that eye level, that's now blocking the view of something that's on a business that's trying to stay open, keep their doors open front. And I appreciate the work the staff has done on this project, and the business and the community input, it's been really good to hear a lot of people and see the attendance at these meetings, at these, thank you.
Michael, I can go to you, or there are two speakers.
I'll just make some quick, my comments are very brief, and I think Laura addressed a lot of, a lot of what I had to say, and I really do think it is a good plan, and I also thank staff for all the work they put into it. I know there were questions about, you know, the value of this plan where there, when there is no money to, to do any of it, but, you know, I agree with, with staff that the timing, timing is everything, and I do think that having this plan in place right now, when we are starting to see some interest in, in developing parcels in San Bruno is important, because we don't want to move ahead with those unless we have a bigger plan, and I think this was a key component, something that was missing from the other planning that we had done. So I definitely welcome this, I, I think it's definitely going to make downtown look great, and if we can implement it incrementally, it'll, it'll definitely go from there, but we, we need a catalyst, and having this in place, I think, is, is very important, so I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
I'd like to move to our two speakers, and then I'll have some comments, please.
Val Morgan.
I know, it's, it's, good evening, Mayor and council members. I know it's a long meeting, and I'll be very brief. I've attended all of the meetings to do with the downtown, because it's something that's close to my heart. First of all, I'd like to thank Jacob Rivka and Josh, I believe it was from WRT, for all their hard work, and for the city staff for all their work to, in bringing this to fruition. I love the plan in general, I just have a few comments. I'm wondering, is it possible to persuade Caltrains to continue their bus route along San Mateo Avenue to the El Camino, rather than turning it up Geneveen, and provide two more bus stop shelters closer to the El Camino? I sincerely hope that the Posey Park and Centennial Parks will be included in this project, as many people present at the meetings and streetwalk express this too. I hope that the drop-off passenger loading zone for Caltrain Station will be included at the Posey Park, it just makes a lot of sense to have it there. I have to say, I'm disappointed in the three proposed designs for the Centennial Park. This area will be the focal point for the whole downtown. We need a plaza with as much open space, paved space as possible. There could be planters on both sides with lots of seating for people to sit and read and enjoy their lunch, and space for children to run and play, and maybe ride their tricycles around. There should be a nice fence or wall at the back to screen off the parking lot, there should be a flagpole that can be raised for various ceremonies, and also a raised platform for entertainers or somebody to make a speech should have cover over it, and a large open area would be, could accommodate a small farmer's market, or a gathering place for art exhibitions or music events, and we should keep a fountain there as well, because it's a big attraction for children. Finally, I think that the streets should be referred to as the downtown, as downtown San Bruno. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Val.
Arus Harmon.
Good evening, Arus Harmon, 633 Second Ave in Bel Air. I first want to really quickly ask, am I allowed to comment now? Because I, if I've been appointed to the Planning Commission and I'm within, I'm sure I'm within whatever is the relevant range.
Well, you know what? We admire that you're already concerned about that, thank you.
So, okay, all right.
Yes, and yes you are.
So my, my lovely spouse, Plymouth, could not be here tonight, she is visiting family, she would be very upset with me if I did not provide her continuous more public art. In particular, we, I mean, we walk into downtown from the Angus Avenue entrance, and we always look at that just bare wall and go, that would make a great mural. And the, the walls underneath the Caltrain underpass as well. I mean, I think this is an opportunity to, I mean, every high school in America has some great artists in it, you know? I mean, this is an opportunity that you could, you could really look at, at having like a sort of a school project to develop ideas for it and implement it. For myself, I just want to endorse the previous speaker, I really would like to see that Centennial Park broadened out with the parking that is behind it concentrated into taller structures. So if you, if you take all of those flat lots we have and essentially stack them up in a smaller space, that both, you know, move that out towards the ends, obviously you're going to need some parking in the middle for handicap spots, as was discussed, and drop-off, but if you move more of the parking out, we could open up that space and have a space for farmer's markets, festivals, maybe some kind of a fountain along the lines, if you're familiar with the very flat one that has the, the tubes that's on the oval in San Jose, that kids love, and something you could turn on for a limited amount of time, use less water, not have it on continuously. And then in general, I would like to see sort of more space along the sidewalks, which kind of leads me into my other comment. I know we discussed in my, my interview the other day, my concerns about incentives for assembly of parcels as we're doing this. I think if we can find a way to give the current parcel owners incentives to essentially take their floor space and compress it a little bit away from the current sidewalk right away, create more outdoor seating while building up, you get more floor space while taking up a smaller footprint, it creates more, more public space, and you can have that kind of public-private transition with cafes, having street-side seating and so on. So, but yeah, I'm really happy to see this moving forwards, and I'm thrilled to be, looking forward to working with you.
Thank you. Any other folks who wanted to speak on this item? Mr. Tom Hamilton.
I didn't fill out a card, but I'll, but it's all be fast. I want to echo some of what Commissioner Morgan said. I was definitely in favor of this when it came before the Planning Commission. I would like to see, as part of the Centennial Park redesign, open space, open space, places for seating, also performance space, you know, a stage where you have, you know, live music, you know, encourage events and encourage people to come to downtown. I also want to echo a couple of comments that I said when this was presented at Planning, which are in response to some comments that we got, public comments that we got before it came to Planning. One was, why do this if you don't have the money for it? And the other was, we've tried this before, and it failed. So the reason you do this is, how, how, how will we know how much money to go out and find unless we know what we want and how much it costs? So that's why, that's why we do this, and that's why this is the first step. And second, that we've tried this before and it didn't work, that's true, but if you take that as your, as your guide- take that as your guide, then there'll never be any progress on anything, anywhere. So that's just ridiculous. And I know you guys won't accept that feedback, so that's great. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Anybody else who wanted to speak on this topic? Okay. For myself, I mean, some of the comments were already discussed, so I'm not going to reiterate everything. But on Centennial Park, you know, as history is, the city bought Wells Fargo a long time ago, and that was to have skin in the game, to say, "We own something on San Mateo Avenue", back when I was on city staff. And therefore, they had it, and then it was just a chain-link fence, and then therefore, you have it today, which was in-house staff that came together, put something together, utilized what currently staff had on hand to have something temporarily. Well, obviously, that temporary has become quite lengthy. My understanding, too, what I need clarification from staff, is the Centennial Park was purchased through redevelopment, and therefore, it being redevelopment, there might be some provision that it has to remain open space of some sort, because if it's sold or utilized for a different means, then it has to go back, and the monies, and I just want to clarify.
That is correct. It's designated as a park, and there's a deed restriction on that property.
So it kind of is a park, and will almost have to remain a park. If we were to sell it or do that, then it goes back to various agencies, not just the city.
To the chair, on that question, if we could, some clarification. So it has to remain a park or just open space or public space?
That's a good question. I'm not 100% sure of that answer, but I know that if it's something other than a park and possibly open space, I'd have to look at the deed to see what it says. Then a share of the proceeds would have to go back to all the taxing agencies as a result of that.
Okay. Thank you.
So that kind of restricts potentially what can be utilized. But I would agree that what we hear from a lot is, it's nice, it's there, but it's roped off. And if you want to call it a park, parks don't have ropes that keep people out. So, I mean, that is something, if it is going to be what it is, then let's have it more user-friendly and have it as something that can be occupied and/or even expanded in some elements. When we talk about streetlights, there's been, since the last time they had the AV unveiling, we have had new streetlights. And I know back then that Kenai Bear and I were very adamant about trying one on Geneveen because of the wind and the element and the abuse that the old ones received that didn't, they weren't durable enough. They didn't hold up. They didn't light up well enough. So we took one, and we had it as a test pilot, and then to see. And obviously, there were things that we learned from that. So I want to preface with staff, I think that that's critical to do, not just say, "Well, guess what? We're just going to replace them all." I think we really have to be cognizant of what durability, whether it's weather, whether it's wind, some areas are worse than others, and then that light visibility. Because every time we go to a better light, then we have about, two years later, people say, "God, the lighting's not good." So I think that's something that needs to be thought of. On the Posey Park, you know, we do have one fountain that is not and has not been functioning. When that concept came in, it was to have two fountains, one on each side. And it was gone back to just one fountain, which was probably a good decision back then. So, you know, I think that's one of those things that, A, it looks undone, just like the arch, undone. Those are the impressions you receive. You drive through underneath the overpass, and there's these things sticking here. And nobody, you know, we could probably do a contest in town, what were these supposed to be for? Because I don't know that everybody knows, and they're still wondering. The fountain, I know we've talked about either having it repaired or having it then with landscaping or vegetation. But however, as we change things, too, I want us to be mindful of upkeep of the pots. So of the pots, now we have the weeds, so now we have staff individually going to each of those, trying to water them or trying to do this or that. So I want us to be mindful of, beauty also has a cost. And so I think we need to be cognizant of that. And obviously, the way Posey Park is laid out today, in hindsight, obviously, there's some things that need to be modified to that, that has it more open and probably has it more visible for people to see as they're driving by or law enforcement. The, I think something, you know, the street sign that Laura talked about going across, I really like that. I think the street sign that we have currently, that has been there for a long time, the top part's already been taken off, and the entrance down San Mateo Avenue from El Camino is not ideal in my mind. And I think a sign like that is very becoming, and hopefully, certainly not as much as the arch was going to cost. But I also think that when we look to vegetation, it's always been a problem with the trees because of the way it is underneath. So then we go into avenues that take up more parking. We try to get seats that maybe skateboarders can use or that maybe people can just lie down on. And I think we need to be cognizant of all those things going forward, and the anti-graffiti type elements. And we do need to make some improvements. So if that means trash cans, and I know there was a group that I had spoken to in our community that wanted to help fund some of those. So I'd like to have us utilize those type of opportunities, and if that means they have a little insignia on that garbage can, I'm good with that, and I think the community would be okay, depending what the insignia is. But if people in the community want to reach out for that, our social groups, I think, service groups, I think that's great. I think the other thing, too, is I know we need a plan, and you have to have something written. And you have to have some kind of costs and elements and figure out, when we get community benefits and dollars are raised, what can we do with what? And I think staff needs to have a prioritized of what's reasonable, what's good, what doesn't get us, if we go down a path of garbage cans or seats, and then we come back a year and we go, "You know what? That wasn't a great call," because maybe it's not in the bigger overall picture. So I want us to be cognizant to that. But I think also, I think the community, the garbage cans obviously need to be repaired or replaced. And I think there are small things we can do when the monies are available, but I think we do need a plan. I think there needs to come back from staff a prioritization of what the priorities are for San Mateo Avenue. I think it needs to come back with a timeline of what those would be if those were implemented. Prioritization and timelines for implementation. And I think the trees being larger, I wouldn't disagree with that either, but not vegetation that blocks the business. And the public art idea, Mr. Harmon, that you brought up reminds me back, I'm going way back when I was young, cappuccino high, but we had some folks who did do murals. They were allowed back then. And they were beautiful, and they lasted, and they weren't vandalized. So there are possibilities. And so I think if we get it more colorful, more inviting, more well-lit, and we have the merchants have the expectation of what their needs and expectations are going into an operation of a business, I think that would be helpful. So those are some of my remarks. Sorry for my voice.
To the chair, can I just get clarification? The priority ranking that was included in the report, is that not acceptable? I know a timeline, I would say, is difficult, because it's really about funding. Is that...
You're asking me? No. I would agree, if they say, if money can be done for benches and seating, and that's it, and they come back and say, "We have a community benefit, we have $2 million, and we think this is the top priority out of all that that we can do for now," then that's what I mean by the priorities. Because we're not going to be able, in my mind, to do all of one right away.
So within priority one, he wants to see a little bit of clarification, so.
Understood.
Maybe we'll look at each tier at a time. As good as the process.
Things may change, too. They may come back and say, "Guess what? We really can collectively with some new development in downtown that they can and want to go forward with this item."
Can I ask, to the chair, can I ask another question?
Of course.
Since we're talking about Posey Park, and that's all connected to Caltrans, can I continue down San Mateo Avenue going north and get to San Bruno Avenue? And San Mateo Avenue, and there's like these two sort of incomplete posts on either side of San Bruno Avenue with bolts sticking out that needed to have an archway go across it. Is that possible, that this is part of tier one?
Good question. Hard answer, sort of all contingent upon funding. But addressing those arches and the exposed bolts was not a part of this plan. It really looked at the heart of San Mateo Avenue. I do think that, being here just a little over a year, having heard that probably more times than I can count, figuring out a plan for that, the old plan was scrapped due to cost, over $1 million for the archway. But the bolts are exposed, and there could be some public art that goes on either side. Is that a moderate cost, or you sort of scrap it, cut the bolts off, and design something that doesn't look unfinished or undone? And so I take that comment to heart, and we will talk about staff's work plan and figure out where we can fit that in.
Thank you.
And also, even we've talked about a monument sign that we used to have before the grade sep, which had the Lions or the Rotary or the 4-H, Troop 72, and it had the various organizations that are in the community. So whether that can be modified and arched to that, I don't know. I'm not the expert in that area. But I think that is something else that the community has desired, so that people that are driving into our city know, you know, maybe Rotary meets, you know, the first and the third, or Lions, et cetera. So I think that was another thing. I'm sorry, Val, did you?
Yeah, just a quick comment. It may be possible to get YouTube or some of the larger companies to sponsor some of the work downtown.
Well, I'm sure the city manager and community development director, Smith, are already thinking that. Any other comments, questions? Okay, this is an action item, resolution.
Motion to approve the resolution of the proposed streetscape plan.
Second.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries 3 to 0 to 2, with Vice Mayor O'Connell and Councilmember Medina recused.
Thank you. And if we can call them back in?